We will be going through 2324 preliminary budget and the financial forecast for this evening. So we'll talk over for the agenda tonight, some financial facts, and then we'll get the financial forecast as well. So in any presentation, presentation, excuse me, that I do related to budget, especially when it's an opportunity to give some more information to community members. I like to talk about the different funds that we have within the school district. As many board members know, we have several funds, they all mean different things, and only certain things can be used with each of those categories. So Fund One, the general fund, is the largest portion of our budget. It's about $190 million, and it includes things that are listed there. The operations include salaries and benefits, supplies, transportation, utilities, equipment, et cetera. But it's for educational programs and services for our kids. It includes things such as athletics and activities. It includes our special education, our career technical programs. It includes administration, nursing services, social work, buildings and grounds, to name a few. Okay, so this is the largest portion of it, it is the portion we'll be focusing on tonight. Okay, however, I fear you're missing, I wouldn't talk about the other budgets as well. So Fund Two is food service, or Wayzetta cafes, as we call it. It too includes salaries and benefits, and the food and the food supplies or equipment. And their revenue generally comes from meal sales, including some funding from the state and federal government as well. That budget is about $7.5 million in given school year. Next, we look at Fund Four, that is community services. It includes the categories you see there, early childhood family education, adult basic education, our Wayzettic kids, which is our childcare program, youth classes, and then just general community education. Their revenue is primarily from fees. There are some other categorical aids that they receive and some levy funds that they receive as well. Next is construction. In our district, we've had a lot of use of the construction fund, but it's for major building projects. Usually the sale of bonds go into construction and then we pay for the construction, we're out of Fund Six. And then lastly, Fund Seven is our debt service, and that is to account for our principal and interest payments on our bonds. So as voters have approved bonds to build buildings, this is where we pay that. So the revenue comes in from our taxpayers, and then the district makes those payments out of the debt service. The key thing to take away on this is it is very difficult to do any movement between those funds. For instance, if food service had a surplus, we just couldn't move that into the general fund. Likewise, if debt service has some additional funds, we can't put those funds into the general fund. On the flip side, if if food service or community services is not doing well, which we saw some of that during the pandemic, the general fund must make sure that they become whole again. So again, the general fund, again, for educational purposes, those other funds are for the categories related that are up there, and there isn't a lot of movement between the various funds. Also, I'd like to just display for you the sources of revenue that we generate in the general fund. So again, that number Fund One that I was talking about earlier. Just under 60% of our funding comes from the state, so very tied to what the state gives us in state aid. And I'm gonna show you a little bit about that coming up. Property tax at around 35%. This is a key indicator for our district in that our Wayzettic communities have provided additional funding to our school district. In other school districts that I've been in, the state portion is around 70, and the property tax portion is around 20 to 25%. So very different here because we had great support from our communities. Federal around 3%, and other, which are fees of any kind, means of interest income are included in the other lesser degree. So you can see the reliance that we have on both the state and property taxes. Next, when we look at the expenses, the majority of our expenses, just over 72% of our expenses are in salaries and benefits. It's very common in school districts as we are very employee oriented and service oriented. Purchase services makes up about 16% of our budget. A fair share of that is our transportation, but there's other items included in that, which would be utilities, our tuition billing, communication services, postage, repair and maintenance, all of those are included in those. Then supplies and other at about 3%, and capital purchases around 9% makes up the pie chart for the general fund expenses. Next, I think it's interesting to kind of look at, if you think of a dollar bill and how we spend a dollar bill. And these are basically programs or departments within our school district. So 68.8 cents on every dollar is spent on instruction and instructional support. And I think you all know what instruction is, but instructional support includes our assistant principals, general instruction support, curriculum, media, instructional technology, and staff development. So all of that, along with our regular instruction and special education instruction, all go into that 16.8 cents. When you couple that with our pupil support at 8.7% or 8.7 cents on every dollar, those include things like guidance counseling, so school security, our health services, social workers, and our transportation. Then at the top of the chart, if you look at our operations and fixed costs, that's 16.4 cents. Utilities, custodial services, it does include some of our LTFM costs as well to take care and maintain our buildings. Then next on the left on the top, or excuse me, the right, at 2.8 cents, that's district and school administration. So it'd be the superintendent's office, it'd be a little bit for the school board, but then it's mostly our building principals. And then at 3.3 cents, our district support, that's for programs such as finance department, HR department, our communications as well. Next, if we look at our enrollment history, and this was taken just off of the report that came from Hazel Reinhardt, a demographer that we, the district has used for a number of years, and she just presented a study in December of '22. So this is looking at October one, and this is seat count. So that means the number of kids we have sitting in our chairs or enrolled with us, and it is kindergarten through grade 12. So those early learners are not included, as well as the, I don't believe the transition students, or ALC was included in the figures. But what you can see from this is that we had steady growth. In fact, in 2016, 15, 16 to 16, 17, we saw enrollment grow by 491, following year, 449. And then it started to taper off a little bit in 2018, 19, and the increase of 313. But you'll note in 2021, we started to see a decline, and of course, that was the year that first fall after COVID. So we did lose students, 127 on October one, pretty much stayed the same in 21, 22. And now we're starting to see the increase in our student population as well. So that's a great sign to see that we're back to a time pre-pandemic, as far as our. Next, if we look at our unassigned fund balance, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about fund balance, you probably care to hear, but there's various categories of fund balance within the general fund. And there is some of this, the same categories in food service and community, but I'm gonna focus on the general fund again. So there is something called assigned, which means the district assigns certain dollars to flow to that account for fund balance. There is restricted, which means that the state of Minnesota dictates how we put those funds in. That would be things like LTFM or staff development, required categories of funding. Then there is the committed, which would take board action to assign that to. And then finally, the unassigned fund balance, and this is the one that most school districts have as their measuring stick. So I looked at from 2013 to where we proposed it's going to end, at the end of this school year, and you can see it's been moving and flowing. And a few interesting facts, certainly in 16, 17, we saw some increase in students. That was 491 kids. Anytime we raise the number of kids that we have in our schools, it makes things more efficient, there's less overhead costs. So your increase in your benefit, or your unassigned fund balance. Our salary and benefits were down that year, other expenses were down about just under a million. But that was also the first year of some of our LTFM expenses. Next couple of years stay there around 8.10%, and then we see a large jump of 11.4% in 19, 20. And keep in mind, this was, most of the year was not a pandemic year, just remaining. But both of those factors do take into place. So we had an increased student count of 215 students, or ADMs, which is average daily membership. We had some additional special education revenue that we had not forecasted. Our student activity accounting moved to the general fund. So that was a change in process that was required, so those fund balances would have been included in that revenue and expenses as well. We had some decreases in our general fund and other categories, but as you'll recall, in March, when the pandemic hit, we probably put the brakes on a lot of different expenditures, okay? We didn't have as much transportation. We did agree with our transportation company to reduce those costs to 90%. We would have had less utility costs, we would have had some heating, lighting, smoke, hopefully that time of March. We didn't have some workable, but it has happened in April. So just a variety of expenses, don't feel tough, guilt trips. So some of those increased our overall unassigned fund balance. But then, as you can see from there, the fund balance has declined, and that's been coupled with a few things. One is the Janet formula that I'll talk about in a little bit, has been at 2%, but our expenses go up greater than 2%. Additionally, just the whole pandemic issues was a factor in all of our years. So as long as I bring up pandemic, I'm gonna talk a little bit on the next slide about federal funding for poor pandemic. So some people might wonder why, why was the federal funding, do we need additional funding, or why are we in the situation that we are in? So I'll talk about a few things here. We did receive just under $12 million in federal pandemic funding between 2020 and 2024. I would point out that during that time, that equates to 1.5% of our budget over a quarter. It's a very, very small portion of that. It was also very restricted on how we can spend it. There was very little of it that we could use to what's called supplement. So if Heidi was an employee here, I could have used those fundings to pay for Heidi, because she was an existing employee. I had to supplement our budget. So in other words, we had to do new things, whether it was PPE protection, whether it was changing our airflow system as it's coming in, it was additional supports for students, it was all of those things, and it was very restrictive. So in general, one-time funding, it was based on our free and reduced eligibility. We're a very large district, and other large districts with a higher free and reduced eligibility received almost 10 times the amount of money that needed in certain categories and at certain times. So even though we might have been dealing with the same situations and the same issues, that that lack of having a formula was not only based on free and reduced, was a detriment to Wayzetta schools. The one other, the other thing, and you'll hear me another times talking about this, one-time funding is not an ongoing source of revenue and does not combat that inflation that we see in our expenses going forward. And then, as I mentioned, funds were raised to require to be spent for specific purposes. We only had about $250,000 that we received as it related to loss of enrollment in our district's enrollment. Not only did we not get the new enrollment from the homes, we also did, we lost a few students, as I pointed out. All right, so now I give you a little background on everything, let's talk about the budget and the financial forecast. So first, I wanted to run you through the budget timeline that we have in the fall and then through December. As you know, as a board, you approved the levy certification for taxes payable in '23, which is the '23, '24 school year. We finalized the audit in, sorry, that's a '21 audit report, should say '22 audit report, I apologize. So we finalized that '22 audit report, which is important for us carrying forward what we think our fund balance will be in the future. And then next, in January, we, the finance team, we worked on projecting what our budget might be. And then we'll see in a couple of weeks, or a week, we'll be talking about budget revision to our current budget. Goodness, I still have that one left, too. I guess I should have asked my team to help me out and review it. So it's the '22, '23 budget. And then in '23, '24, budget projection coming up. And then we're into the cost containment, the staffing, and preliminary budget will be working on March through May, and then approval of the budget. So obviously, if I reuse the slide that I should have updated, I'm sorry. But I did want to tell you that the finance team did develop a list of projections. The leadership council met in December to brainstorm various ideas, and then in January, began that cost containment process. So the slide we have up here now is the financial forecast and assumptions. So I'm going to be talking about '23, '24, which is our next school year, '24, '25, and then the subsequent two years past that. The enrollment that we used was from our demographer, so we used the low kindergarten, high migration figures from Hazel Reinhardt, and her projections moving forward. So for next year, 12,281, and then up to 12,510, you can see that growth that I was talking about earlier, we're starting to see that. Then on the funding formula, the current upcoming year, 2%, we go across to the next year, 2%, and then it's dropped down to 1% and 1%. They had a board member ask me this, and the reason is that this is the first time ever I've done a budget with a 2% and 2% because we've never had any sure bets with the state that funding would be coming our way. But with a $17 billion budget, most of my colleagues are budgeting 2% this year and the next year. We have been getting 2% over the last, I think, eight years, maybe, so it seemed like a good bet, okay? But in subsequent years, in the '25, '26, and '26, '27, it's just too far out there for us to say with any certainty. I would guess we're gonna get 2 and 2, but I don't, I don't have a lot of confidence because it's, I lived three times when we got 0. So it's very rare to get anything much more than 2%. Federal funding, that's based on past experience. Our other categories, similar situation of what we've seen in the past. Our tax levy, 2.46 in the current year, we know that. We have an estimate for the following year at 5.7, and then leveling that up around the 4 and 4.7. Then our salaries and benefits, they're either per our contract or per board parameters, which have not been set yet. Medical dental, we're estimating 5% across the board, utilities around 6. Our transportation, we're on year two of our contract for transportation. Last year, it ranged between 3% and 17%, depending on the category, roughly around that 15% increase in our transportation. This is the second year, we know that it's going to be a 7% increase. We have increased that to 10% because we know that it's, frustrators are hard to find, it's a scarce market right now for employment, as well as steel costs are going up. And then all other at that 2%. So all of these, these financial information that you see here will help forecast the next page. But what I want to draw your eye to is those revenue percents, and keep in mind that our funding formula is our state aid. Okay, so the state aid, we expect to go up 2 and 2, and when you look down below, you see those rates at, those inflation rates at 5, 6, 7, or 10%. Okay, you can't sustain that without making some revisions or making some adjustments to your spend. Okay? So you take all those things I mentioned earlier, you include the enrollment, you include the funding forecast for the funding formula increase. Keep in mind, the current year we in, we did get 2%, and then funding for '24 and '25, I'm projecting, as I said, 2% and then 1%. With all that, the total revenue, as you can see, going across in next full year, 176 million. This is year '25, 181, '26, just under 186 million, 190. Then when you get to the expenses, taking all of those assumptions I baked in here, you can see that we, our expenses exceed what we are getting in revenue. And therefore, this is why we need to have a, some cost containment in place. If you look at this, the year '23, the current year that we are in, a year ago, we were having, well, maybe a little more than a year ago, we were having this same conversation. We knew that our expenses were greater than our revenue, and part of that was due to our enrollment has not started coming back. And just the mere fact that inflation was hitting our expenses at a greater rate than what we were receiving in revenue. We did use $2.1 million of fund balance projection for this year. That's on top of the 5.5 million we cut, and net effect of that was about 4.5 million that we cut for the current year. We knew and shared with you that we would, we would need to do something again. Okay, so not a surprise, but maybe it's a little bit bigger dollar than you and it's something. So if we did nothing, okay, and we just let everything flow through as I projected in those, you see those assumptions, you're gonna see that we would use just under 6.8 million dollars in fund balances in current year. It escalates up to 8.3, 11.27, and 13.5. Next year, we would be less than the 5%. If you'll recall, your range is 5% to 7%. We have been above that 7% in the past, and I would like to keep it that way. So 3.31 is highlighted in red to let you know it's below your threshold, and then those following years are negative, which is not something we would ever want the district to do. So we have to have a plan, okay? So if we go to the next slide, now we've put some numbers in there to say, okay, if we take that base that I talked to you about initially, and then we add in some cost containment figures, kind of a what-if, and put in 7 million for the first year and 2.4 for the second year, we're over 9 million together, we will be above the 7%. 7.41, 7.95, and then it starts to fail. Now, if, if we had a 2% in there for years '26 and '27, that would bring us just under a million dollars more, maybe a little more, because the enrollment's growing. So that would help, but it isn't totally going to help everything. So we do need to have a plan for our subsequent years. And we need to know now, because there's timelines as it relates to staffing, as it relates to getting prepared to keep your budget in June. We know the governor and the legislators are working hard right now to get, come up with a plan. But we won't know that till the end of May. And so as a district and as a board, we need to have a plan put together so that we can have things in place. And you'll see that you probably have some, we might have some options when we bring those to you, that we, what would happen if? And then are there some things that we might not do or peel back if we will to make it a little easier? But we will be making some budget cost containment efforts if we get new funding, unless it's way beyond anything, if that for our sake, but I don't know. So if you go to the next slide, maybe wondering, or people in the audience might be wondering, well, how, how did you get here? How did we get to this point? I talked a little bit about that, but we did have funding challenges through that pandemic. Yes, we received some money, but as I said, it was very specific on how we could spend that. It wasn't in categories that we might have needed to help support the district for the enrollment cost. And that, of course, was the other issue, is we did lose enrollment during the pandemic, parents made other choices. Individuals did not buy homes, the housing market slowed down a little bit. But more importantly, the state funding has just not kept up with the inflation for several decades. And you may have seen a chart that ANSD and Masco puts out on that gap that's between that. And I know in my previous district, if that had kept up, we would have received about $6 million more every year, and we were smaller than Wayzetta. So that is, that is a huge factor. There's also always those unfunded mandates, you don't do this, there's no new money, but you need to comply with them. And as you know, special education has been underfunded for many, many years. We receive approximately 50% of the costs that it takes to educate a student who is a special needs student. So that gap is, comes out of the general fund. And then I talked about the inflationary pressures on expenses. And then also having an unassigned fund balance means we need to be above that 7%. I don't tell you what shared as superintendent today, 7% seems a little low to me. I liked that 11.5 that we were at at one point, but there's a happy meeting here somewhere, right? And the district was fortunate that they had 11.5 at that point in time to help soften during the pandemic. And that's part of the reason why you have an unassigned fund balance is to help when there's things that have come up that you're not ready for, or not thinking about. So we did, as I said, we started a plan, we got ideas from the leadership council. We had pages and pages and pages of ideas. We took them and kind of mashed up those things that made sense together, because a lot were similar, there were some different ideas. And there's some things that I will tell you need to be explored in the future. They might not be something you can get done now, but maybe it's something to do in the future. So with, you know, a shortage of money, sometimes you just have to start looking at, what are some things we can do differently? Put those lists together. But you can see we have a strong mix of people representing all over the district. And as I mentioned, we might be doing multiple years. That's why we're set for something for '23, '24, and '24, '25, because some of those items can't happen, take a little longer to come to fruition. So I just, trying to make that out here, so, but. So with that, we have had three meetings, four starting on Wednesday, and then we have one in, one future one as well. I'm hoping we can get done with our ideas by Wednesday, because it's kind of exhausting for everyone, it takes a toll. And it's not, it's not a fun task to do like anything. So if you turn to the next page, you're probably wondering, well, what, what do we think for the governor's funding proposals? So we have been told that the governor has a 4% proposal for next year and 2% for the following year. And then in '25, '26, and beyond, be able to tie that to inflation with a cap at 3%. You'll see that our expenses sometimes exceed. You'll see that our expenses sometimes exceed three percent. So there's a little worry for me on that too. But the sooner we contain costs in any given year, it has a down effect of being cost effective. So it's, it's a good time to do that. Special education excess cost aid, reducing the current excess cost that's borne by the district by approximately fifty-seven, fifty percent. It's like forty-four point something. And then English learner excess cost aid, reducing that current excess cost that the district pays by about twenty-five percent. So you're probably wondering, what does that generate for our school district? One percent increase in the funding in the state is just under nine hundred, or just under a million dollars. So two, two percent more than we were expecting this year would be about one point eight million. Our special education excess cost aid, you know that we spend nine to ten million dollars on excess cost support. So somewhere in that four point five million dollars. And English learner, and she'll help me with that today, I know, but it was around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars estimated. Now, that's, that's the government plan in that cap. What I spent time cautioning leadership and our, and our basket tainting a smile, like you just already say this over and over again. Is can't start going down the path of you've got that money because we don't and we won't until we know what happens in May. So build the plan and then, as I mentioned, we can then look at how do we reinstate some of that? How, how, how many of those items are just good ideas to keep going forward to help us in most future years? Okay? So this is kind of our, our plan. If you stop, start at the top left and cover clockwise, got the cost containment committee going. We'll review with the superintendent, the executive directors and Nate. Any plans that we have, we'll bring that back to the strategy leadership team and leadership council for review. And then bring it on to the finance board, finance committee, and then to a work session with you. I'm hoping all of that is done by, okay, in the March, coming back at work session and having that conversation with you. And then, of course, adoption of the budget will take place in June. Okay? With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions. Scott and Jill, who've spent a lot of time working on this with me, are here as well, so if you have questions. Thank you so much, board colleagues. This is, this is a lot, this is heavy, and it's also very well thought out with a historical perspective. And, and also some thought impact. So indeed, this is the time to answer questions or entertain comments or.
Just a quick question, thank you so much. So I heard you say, build the plans, but you don't have the money, so great, build, build a plan. So if we do get the money to go back and back, boys, that just put to the side, how does that work?
Well, I think as a, as a administrative chairman, we kind of come back with, to you with some recommendations. There probably, I mean, to cut nine million dollars, we're, we're doing a lot, right? And we may have recommendations to come back and say, let's, we can still afford out four years and have a decent fund balance if we do X. Okay, so we would come back with a plan to say, we would recommend maybe reinstating whatever the item is. It can still get us out to those four years that I've got suggested. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thanks, DeeDee. I've asked my one, one question, but the other is sort of more a philosophical question rather than a numbers question. But how sort of irreversible are many of these cost containment efforts? Which the committee is going to figure out, where they're so. I mean, that they, they take place and then we can't change it if the government comes through or the legislature comes through. And we just live with that.
Well, I think a couple of things. I think you're going to want to look at, maybe gather some other information that's going to help with whether or not we reinstate something. Or if we're, hey, this is a great idea to keep us afloat for years to come. We think we can make this work. We leave that as it's. Now, as a board, if let's just. Let's just say you did something different with transportation, okay? And down the road, you decided, yeah, that didn't work so well, or we'd like to bring back whatever. You have the right to do that. And then, you know, finance and the administration will tell you, here's the effect of that. Is that, am I answering your question? Yeah.
So going back, there was a slide on the general fund, on the source of revenue. You need to mention about in other districts you've worked in, the, the portion difference, like it was state. Seventy percent versus property taxes were lower. That's not to say that that other district was receiving more money from the state, right? It's just that the breakdown was just kind of correct.
Yeah, so they have a heavier reliance on state aid than we do. So it's the percent of mix of the funds that they get. We all get the same funding formula based on the number of children we, we serve. So, but they might not have an operating referenda at the level we do. They might not have one at all. So then they're very reliant on the state to give us money and work within that. They don't have that operating referenda or technically to help support what they're trying to do. That's a good question.
I have one question.
Okay.
And this is a bigger picture question. And I, and, and maybe, and it's a baseball question a little bit. And I, and I know when you were doing our budget the last time, you referenced a little bit the, the roadmap and, and our district priorities and our equity commitment. And so we know as a board, we have a couple of responsibilities. One, we've got to make sure we have a, a balanced budget, right? We gotta be wide source of the taxpayers' money. And two, we'd say to the administration, this is our roadmap, these are our values, these are our priorities. Can you give us just some insights about how this committee and some other work that you're doing? Helps to stay in alignment with the roadmap and the equity commitment even as we're making hard decisions?
Sure, so, well, first of all, when I said in our, my slide. Seventy-two percent of our funding or our spending is on staff. I will tell you, this is going to affect staff, there's just no way around it, right? So we try to look at those things that we can still deliver, deliver quality education for our kids, right? And what are the other items that we can work on to make things happen? We also need to look at that bottom left-hand corner where it talks about operational excellence. I think that's part of what this process will help us do, is look at that operational excellence. How can we deliver things in a less costly manner, but still maintain good service and programs for our kids? Does that help?
It does help, yeah, thank you.
No questions? Superintendent, do you have?
I'll just make a few additional comments. I don't know whether I have any questions at this point, but you know, maybe one. See that I will plan it for you is during this meeting or in follow-up, feel free to reach out. If you have thoughts or insights about what we should keep in mind as we move forward, based on what you heard here tonight. So that we have the benefit of, you know, our governance from that perspective, do our best. From an administrative perspective, to take a look at the large enterprise and do our best to put a game plan together for the coming year. And then be responsive as per some of the questions and requests in the event that the revenues do change. We'll do our best to stay in a position, I appreciate what Linda said, is how do we, you know, not have irreparable damage done? You know, how do we minimize that as we go through this process? And make sure that we do protect that. But in the same token, as DeeDee indicated, there is that sweet spot that we talked about, the trade efficiency and effectiveness. Sometimes during these challenging times, as painful as they are, it does force you to take a look at. That balance of efficient and effective are the more efficient ways we can deliver this without seriously impacting the effectiveness. And I just made a couple of notes here as I was listening along too. And I reminded that as I've been reading the newspapers and listening to them lately, it's not just public schools that are beginning to experience some challenges. It's a lot of private enterprises that are downsizing a little bit. You're in anticipation to future economic conditions, which who knows, they're only projections and predictions. And in response to whatever their current reality might be or their recent experiences might have been. So, you know, it's, it's not totally unique right now for organizations to be kind of going through this, this process. And, you know, we, we have a long ways to go yet with the legislative session. So I'll be engaging with local legislators that reached out today with communication. Just to share a little bit about our story and some of the things that I would like them to keep in mind as they move forward with this process. And we all know that they do have quite a nice package of cash in the bank right now. That will be important for them to really give serious consideration about in regard to, as we've heard of. The historic contribution to education. But in part, some of that is in response to the challenges the school districts have had. I think that there probably still isn't a complete understanding in our own district, in the metro or statewide, nationwide, probably. The impact that COVID had on our operations and our organization. And we're still working toward trying to backfill a little bit and plan for the future and hold on to that excellence that our community expects from us. So it's not an easy package of ingredients that we're trying to cook here for the coming year. But we have a lot of talent in the district and I'm very confident that, you know, we'll blend in the, the best place possible. And do our best to not cause excessive damage or irreparable. Damage to our programming and services that we deliver. I just wanted to share also for listening public in regard to a couple of those inflationary challenges that we're experiencing. And DeeDee mentioned it in her presentation as well. But when you compare the two percent increase on the formula that we're building these projections on. And then looking at the insurance costs and the transportation costs that are projected for the upcoming two years. I think all of those were equal to or exceeded that two percent. So it just really isn't a good business model. And in the current year, I think it's important for our listeners to know, we had two percent increase on the formula. Inflation is categorized now or estimated at about eight percent. And our transportation costs that showed up fifteen to eighteen percent. Is that the correct number? About fifteen?
Yeah, I think it was actually thirteen for our general.
Okay, thirteen percent. So you can see where, you know, some of these differentials are hitting and, and it's just really been a big challenge for us. So, and we're not unique as a school district either. A lot of school districts are, you know, still trying to recover from the impact of COVID. And inflationary pressures. Inadequate funding. Or through the general education formula, special education excess costs that DeeDee talked about, the EL excess costs. So the general fund really has been challenged in the last couple of years and that will continue. You know, until we can kind of get the, you know, the equilibrium back, where hopefully we'll, we'll have a little bit of better momentum moving forward again. So I think in the, the process of the presentation, I think DeeDee did a great job of giving you the, the high level perspectives. And I appreciate the questions if you have more, certainly you can take those. Or if you have some of those insights that you think would be important for us to do our best to keep in mind as we continue on with this process. Next steps are kind of being determined, I guess, as we go along within the process. But once we get a better picture of what we feel that we need to bring to you as a recommendation for moving forward. Then, you know, we'll be sure that along with that, there'll be appropriate communication plans. And we'll keep the community informed, and our staff involved, informed. And do our best to provide the information in the best way possible. When we know what the key communication points are. But one thing that I think DeeDee also did a great job of emphasizing is, well, it would be nice if we knew for sure where all this would land at the end of May. And if it were, you know, at the governor's package level or beyond, hopefully beyond, that still comes up a bit short, even with what it's been outlined. And again, a lot of it is just that catch-up from COVID and from years of not funding at appropriate inflationary rates. Really hope more of that will happen, but we can't plan for that. Because then when it hits in May, then, well, I guess things turn for the worse. So it can only give you one and one, or two, you know, even the two and two, we're pretty sure on the two and two at this point. There's no guarantees. If there were a way for our legislative body to land on some of these targets early and get them locked in. I don't know of mechanisms that allow for that. I'll probably be asking some questions about that when the opportunity presents itself. But I want to hold our breath on that one. I think it's gonna have to go, go the distance through the, the normal session. And that really puts us in a challenging place because we have to plan. But hope that, you know, we'll, we'll end up in a better place when it's all said and done. So that probably sounded pretty rambly, but those were thoughts that came to mind as I was kind of thinking, thinking through.
The only thing I'd add again, thank you, DeeDee. I think it's important also to, when people talk about the S R funds and all of this great amount of money that we brought in. Realistically, it's one point five percent over the four years. And then when you look at the inflationary costs and just being able to compare it, it's a much smaller number. I think people thought that that dollar amount was going to save the day and be able to fix a lot of things, and just didn't. And highlighting what Jay said, no, we won't know until the deal is signed. Think about last year's legislative session where we truly thought, we all went to that thinking there was a deal in place. And we woke up the next day only to find out it had fallen apart literally at the midnight hour and there was no deal. And so until we actually see and know it, it's, it's so important what we're doing to be able to set us up for success moving forward. And being able to then, if, if there, if it does come to fruition, then we create a plan at that point.
One other nugget I'll give you, if this helps at all. You will get ninety million dollars on our total budget, it's about four point seven percent cut. You will get just totally exposed for next year, three point seven percent, seven million. So it helps a little bit because our budget is a large budget, it's the district, so. Still the dollar amount is shot.
Thank you very much. Well, I have for, I have in front of me the cost containment committee. And I do just want to say on behalf of the board, thank you to each of the members of this cost containment committee. These are very important and busy administrators who are, who are doing things. And, and we appreciate the work that they have done and, and the hard conversations that they're having. Also to the S L T and many of the members that are here. I know those hard conversations and, and the really digging in deep have been happening for quite a while. And we know it's a very serious job, so thank you to that. And ultimately to our finance team, DeeDee and Scott and Jill and David and, and all that helped them. You know, this is, this is really important and really hard work, and I'm sure it's all consuming. So thank you for your continued commitment to our students, commitment to our taxpayers and the good use of their money. And most importantly, commitment to our district and all that we do. Thank you.